Good evening and welcome to the August 6, 2024, meeting of the City Council. The Walnut Creek City Council encourages a respectful dialogue that supports freedom of speech and values of diversity of opinion. The council staff and members of the public are expected to be civil and courteous and to refrain from questioning the character or motives of others participating in the meeting. The city requests that speakers not use threatening, profane, or abusive language which disrupts, disturbs, and otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the council meeting. Please refer to the end of the agenda to review options for participating in the meeting. And at this moment, I will welcome you, and will you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Francois.
Here.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
Councilmember Wilk.
Here.
Mayor Protem Darling.
Here.
Mayor Haskew.
Here.
All right, council, I am going to request that we make a small adjustment to the agenda. I am going to ask you that I have permission to make special arrangements to provide comments to the first to include the, I'm so tongue-tied, I'm so excited, the Eagle Scout recognition. And then after that, we will do council member announcements, et cetera. And so I have four proclamations, and it looks like I have four people ready to get a proclamation. I'm going to read it while I'm sitting down because it's kind of long. Whereas Ian Haga, Ryan O'Connes, Jack Pickett, and Matthew Wong have distinguished themselves as exemplary members of Scouts, Boy Scouts Golden Gate Era Council, Troop 226 in Walnut Creek, for attaining the high rank of Eagle, and as such, join a very select circle in outstanding personal achievement. Ian, Ryan, Jack, and Matthew have distinguished themselves as leaders among Scouts. Now, as their names are inscribed on the roster of the Eagle Scouts, they can proudly list this as an accomplishment on all resumes and biographies. Particularly noteworthy is the fact that fewer than 2% of all Boy Scouts ever reach this pinnacle. For as many people as are aware, while one may be referred to as a former Boy Scout, Eagle Scout is a distinction one will carry throughout life. I may be starting to cry here. I especially applaud your individual service projects. Ian did the creation of a bench at Pied Piper Preschool to honor the beloved Walnut Creek preschool educator. Ryan had refinished a picnic area at Heather Farm for the Walnut Creek Arts and Recreation Department. Jack designed and created and implemented compost bins at two Walnut Creek Schools, Parkmead Elementary and Eagle Peak Montessori School. And Matthew collected and refurbished soccer equipment to benefit Soccer Without Borders in Oakland. Your achievements symbolize an extraordinary degree of tenacity, skill, commitment, and perseverance. These important personal traits will serve you all well into the future and point your way to lifelong success and services. Whereas the Eagle Award is a badge of honor you may wear with pride always, and I take pride in saluting your remarkable efforts. Now, I, Luella Haskew, mayor of the City of Walnut Creek, on behalf of the Walnut Creek City Council, do hereby congratulate Ian, Ryan, Jack, and Matthew on attaining the rank of Eagle, the highest offered by the Boy Scouts of America at Troop 226 Eagle Court of Honor on August 4, 2024, and wish them all the best in their future endeavors. Congratulations.
Now, I just have one quick thing, Luella. As the daughter of an Eagle Scout, the sister of an Eagle Scout, the wife of an Eagle Scout, and most importantly, the mother of an Eagle Scout, let me tell you guys something. You four are all now Eagle Scouts. That does not mean that you are not going, you're going to be able to stay out of trouble. But you'll have, based on my son and his cohort's experience, you'll be very adept at getting out of trouble. So keep that in mind. Congratulations.
If each of you will come over here, and I'm going to ask you all, this is a really obnoxious thing, I will ask you all to tell us a little bit more about your project.
My name is Ian Haga, and I'm going into my freshman year at the University of Washington. I attended Walnut Heights, WCI, and graduated from Los Lomas last May. I started as a Cub Scout back in 2012 and joined Troop 226 in 2018. Finding the right project for me was a very long and very stressful experience. We discussed many different ideas. I finished and then scrapped at least two different reports, and I made several last-minute changes until Mr. Moore finally introduced me to Pied Piper Preschool. They'd recently lost their longtime Assistant Director and well-known Walnut Creek parent, Angelina Bradley. Mrs. Bradley was known for her kindness, her dedication, and her support to the children and the staff of the preschool. Mrs. Bradley's family and the school came together and decided that a bench near the school would be fitting to honor her memory. This project was a massive undertaking, one that I admittedly underestimated. Mrs. Woodin, who is Pied Piper's representative, and I exchanged emails 24/7 for nearly two months, working out dates, times, payments, supplies, materials, and countless other things. During my first visit to the school, we determined that the Scouts would have to do some landscaping in addition to building the bench itself. This period of time was very important for me, as I realized just how much this project meant to the community and to the school. Learning more about Mrs. Bradley and the school itself made it much more personal for me and made me want to, like, made me more dedicated to it. After figuring out the measurements and the details, I began drafting a plan and instructions for the bench. I bought materials, organized the time and the date when we would build the bench with the school and our troop. And on the day of the project, we had roughly 10 kids show up to help, and I divided them into three groups: one building the base of the bench, one building the back of the bench, and one doing the landscaping. This method sped up the progress considerably, and we finished the project in just over five hours. This project was a lot of work, but seeing the kids crawl all over the bench made me proud and reassured me that we are honoring Mrs. Bradley's memory correctly. This project taught me better leadership, organization, and responsibility, and it is one of the most rewarding experiences of my scouting career. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ryan Okens, and I recently graduated from Los Lomas High School this past May. Before that, I went to Walnut Creek Intermediate and Parkmead Elementary. I completed my Eagle Scout project last September at Heather Farms Park, with the help of my beneficiary, Mr. Jim Carlson, and Mr. Kevin Safin. My fellow Scouts and I revitalized a picnic area by painting tables, cleaning barbecues, and overall making the area more welcoming to the community. This experience improved my leadership skills and taught me planning and problem-solving. Overall, scouting has been a positive experience for me and has improved me in many ways. And I'm just overall very happy I was able to do something for this community. Thank you.
My name is Jack Pickett. I am part of Troop 226. I'm going into my senior year at Los Lomas High School. I previously went to Parkmead Elementary and Walnut Creek Intermediate. I joined Scouts, well, Cub Scouts, in 2013 at PAC 302 over at Hillside Church. And then in 2018, I bridged over to Troop 226. For my project, I created two compost bins to just improve the gardens at Parkmead Elementary, where I went for elementary school, and then Eagle Peak Montessori School over near Northgate. I'm really into, like, science and stuff like that, so I wanted to use, build the compost bins so that they could use them for their science classes and anything just like garden-related. From what I learned during my project is a lot of things. You have to focus on the younger kids because they will run off and do whatever they want. I know from experience because we built the compost bins at my house, and I have two sheep and two goats in the backyard. And one of the kids thought it was a good idea to take a paintbrush and try to paint the sheep. We had to steer him the correct way into painting wood instead, much to his disappointment. We finished everything on just two days, I think, total of eight hours, and then we were able to deliver the compost bins to their respective schools. You can see on the board, the middle one is Parkmead, blue and yellow for the colors, and then the other one is blue and green for Eagle Peak Montessori School. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I'm Matthew Wong. And as you can see up here, I did a soccer equipment drive for a local nonprofit called Soccer Without Borders, and they're based out of Oakland. But a lot of my equipment collecting and I worked with, I think you can see in the top-left picture, with Copa Soccer Training Center here in Walnut Creek. We're from Walnut Creek, and a lot of my donations were from the community that I live in. And so that was one of the best things about my project, and one of my favorite things about the project was that while I was donating locally, I was also able to collect things from most of my neighbors and people that I'd played soccer with for a long time, and to see the impact in the community. From time to time, go out there to play in their pickup games and with their crew, and it's super awesome to see the little kids who now have cleats and shin guards and things to play the game with. But it goes beyond the field. They use soccer to keep kids away from dicey situations in the community and use it as a place to, where kids can get tutoring and extra school support when they need it. And so that was another, one of my things is that, yes, I wanted to go through soccer, but I also wanted to see impact outside of the game, and that's what I love so much about this program. And so, yeah, thank you so much for your time.
Are there any other council, are there any other council, excuse me, are there any other council members who would like to make comments? Matt, you look like you might.
Thank you, Mayor, and congratulations to all of you. I was able, I was privileged to attend your Eagle Court of Honor on Sunday, and it's nice to see you all here in the council chambers. I also want to give a shout out to the adult volunteers who put in countless hours and efforts to make sure that you guys are successful in your program. I know we have an assistant scout master, Jonathan O'Connes, here today, and the scout master, Robert Moore, who has stayed involved with the program years after his kids have bridged out of scouting. So appreciate the adults showing our younger generation the way, and sincerely thank all of you for kind of giving back to your community. It means a lot to all of us.
Yeah, I just want to say congratulations. I've been to several of the Eagle Court of Honors over the years. I know how difficult this is, just from all the projects that I hear about. Tremendous, tremendous job, but also, I'm sure, this camaraderie that you'll have for the rest of your lives with each other and really going through, especially if you started at Parkmead and all the way through. So that's great. And again, this just can't happen without parent volunteers. We see that not just with Eagle Scouts, we see it with sports and so many other things as well. So thank you to those. And congratulations, and you got a challenge ahead for the future Eagle Scouts to come as well, that will see you here in the next few years. So again, thanks, everyone, and I look forward to hearing how college goes.
Well, congratulations. I'm so happy for all of you. But what it also tells us when we see youth like you is that we can have confidence in the future. We may not know exactly what you will do, but we know that our future will be in good hands because young men like you and young women who are in the Girl Scouting Programs are going to be in charge, and we are going to be very, very lucky. So congratulations, and I look forward, best of wishes at University of Washington, my daughter and son-in-law's alma mater.
Their five-year-old twins know how to do it as well.
I know how hard it is, and it is one of those things that I know my son looks back on, and he's, he's really proud that he made it through, and it helped him get his first job. So just keep that in mind. You guys keep that in mind, too. It pays off. So congratulations.
And thank you. As a little explanation, I screwed up. I was supposed to be at the Eagle Court, and when I, when I realized I'd missed it, I lost all sleep that night trying to figure out how I could make it up to you. It meant that much to me to honor you, and so thank you for coming a special time, and I hope this really inspires you to enjoy the rest of your time off before you go to school again. And thank you, parents. Thank you, everybody who made this possible. And, gosh, I'm beside myself. Anyhow, thank you. I'm done. All right. Excuse me, before everybody goes, may we have a photo with the entire council? And anybody else in the, who deserves to be in the picture? council members' reports. So councilmen.
Is that Kellner?
No, we're going to finish up this part of the meeting. Councilmember Francois, do you have anything to share?
You know, I had already shared that I attended the Eagle Court of Honor, and I didn't have any other update.
Good. Okay, Councilmember Wilk.
All right. Well, a few of the things that I did, actually, I think several of my fellow council members did as well. We had the grand opening for the Library Cafe, Prologue. Great to see that. They're actually from Vietnam, and they make one of the Vietnamese egg coffees that I got to experience when I was there a little over a year ago. It is phenomenal. Check out this cafe and have some of their truly Vietnamese delicacies there. We also had the Presto Autonomous Launch, which was last week in Rossmore. So these are autonomous shuttles. There is an attendant in there. Autonomous shuttles going back and forth between the Gateway Plaza and between the fitness center. And this is truly the future. We are seeing the future in the present right now. And we had Councilmember Silva, Mayor Protem Darling.
I couldn't get there.
So we, we had a quorum of council members that were there at the Presto launch, and just great to see. And the media was out. I'm really excited about this, this new era of transportation that we're looking at. Several of us were at the Mayor's Conference and/or the East Bay Leadership last week, and we got to recognize, among others, David Bowlby, who we often see here come into the council meetings, and with the Ellen Tausher Award this year. And of course, Ellen Tausher was a very well-known and beloved Congress member, Congress member for this area, and also under Secretary of State, under Secretary of State Hillary Clinton several years ago. So great to be able to honor him, as well as others in the East Bay Leadership. And that is my update.
Next.
Thank you very much, Mayor. At the recent meeting of our Recycle Smart, which is the agency, six members in central Contra Costa that handle the trash and recycling services for this area, we received an update on a sustainability summer camp program that Recycle Smart ran with the City of Arinda. And of course, immediately, the other five agencies said, we want summer camp program like that as well. So I'm just putting it on the radar screen for arts and recreation. Get your bid in. It was well-attended. There were 30 participants in the week-long summer camp, and the kids learned all about composting, how recycling works, what order to put things in, and what bins, how to take care of organic waste, and they also got to see some big trucks. So that was great. Last week, the first meeting of the selection panel for the public artists that will be providing the public art in the new Heather Farm facilities met. There are five on the committee, and we went through 34 applicants, kind of a quarterfinals participation, and we won of the herd from 34 to 10, and we look forward to interviewing them in September. The objective is, because we are building this public facility, a certain percentage of the cost of the facility must be allocated for public art, and it's nearly $1 million. I guess it's 1% of the hard costs of the project. And what we're going to do is look at multiple artists in multiple locations within the park areas, maybe some in the new building, as well as some in key locations where the public will get, enjoy, to enjoy the art. And so I look forward to reporting back on that over, of course, in the next few weeks and months. And that will be all I would report on.
Thank you. I also got a chance to go to Prologue and see the new cafe at the, at the library. They seemed very welcoming and very ready to go. I also went to the Presto Shuttle ad at Rossmore, and the best thing was, is there's a attendant on the bus, so that if you can't get your seatbelt on, which was my problem, they would help you put your seatbelt on. But it is, it will be very interesting to see how that works for the Rossmoreans. The other two things are MCE-related things. MCE, in our budget this year, got to the point where we have met our reserve goals, and we have some extra capital. And the electricity markets in California are changing dramatically as we near the point where we really have a tremendous amount of solar and the mandates to go to renewable energy. What MCE is finding is that it is changing market dynamics as far as cost of energy, availability of energy, and when they need extra supply. So when we were all young, much younger people, they always said, oh, don't use electricity between noon and 4:00. Well, no, that's not it anymore. Now it's between 4:00 and 9:00. And so what we are doing right now is looking at our extra capital and looking at what projects MCE can invest in directly, rather than just buying contract power from different sustainable, sustainable sources, so that they have some resources that are more flexible so that they can help meet the changing dynamics of the electricity market. It's a really interesting, complicated world right now, and they usually go out once a year for a solicitation for new contracts, and usually they get quite a few people. This year, they got a relatively small handful, and they were very expensive. So we're looking at what we do to react to that changing market. And then this morning, we got to go out, the City of Richmond has a program with MCE where they go in and they find abandoned houses, and they have social impact bonds that the city has issued, and they use the capital from those bonds. They go in, and they completely rehab the house, including, include all the electric, you know, sustainable, electric, efficient water heaters and everything like that, batteries and solar. And then they install controllers so that the extra capacity from the solar and the extra capacity from the battery is accessible to MCE. And so MCE compensates the owner for that power, and it's a really elegant solution for an area of Richmond where quality housing is hard to find. And so the house that we got to tour this morning was beautifully done, ready for people to move in, and had some pretty amazing technology on it. And it will be interesting to see how that continues to spread because that technology allows that homeowner to not only live in a more comfortable house, because it's super efficient, but make money selling the excess power back to the grid on an amazingly quick, every-five-minute time step. If they can produce power that's cheaper than what's on the grid, there it goes. So that was really fascinating. So that was my report.
Why, thank you. I attended the reopening or reintroducing the Contra Costa Crisis Center. Contra Costa Crisis Center is a nonprofit in the area that not only handles suicide prevention calls like I used to do when I was a suicide prevention volunteer a long time ago, but they also now help all people in all kinds of crisis situations, and it's very important to our community. And I guess it's growing to be a countywide issue, and so they're getting a lot of attention. And I led the Mayor's Conference, and I went to the Walnut Creek New Employees Reception, and we have a lot of really young, eager people who are going to make our lives wonderful. So that's it.
You know what we all forgot? We just came back from National Night Out, and all the Walnut Creek PD and many of our first responders are out there sweating in the sun while we are here in the air conditioner. But it was...
Hopefully, the breeze has come up, and they're more comfortable. City Attorney, do you have anything to report?
Nothing to report this evening, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. City Manager?
Yeah, good evening. Dan Buckshai, City Manager, and I do have three updates this evening, one that is a more difficult topic, and the other two that are lighter and more celebratory. The first being, I wanted to acknowledge the horrific traffic accident that occurred last Wednesday, the 31st. It's a late Wednesday, early morning, an accident, single car, that resulted in the loss of life of the 18-year-old driver and considerable injuries to the passenger. It was really a very difficult accident and scene. And in addition to offering my condolences on behalf of the city to the families and those impacted, I wanted to acknowledge all of the efforts of our first responders. We had, in particular, several of our police officers who responded, many members of our county fire and medical response team who were on scene very quickly to secure the area and obviously to provide as much assistance to the two individuals who were involved in the accident. It was a, you know, a difficult scene, and there is the human impact, in addition, obviously, those who were in the accident, but to those who are responding to what is a very challenging and difficult situation, especially given the age of those involved. So I want to acknowledge their efforts, as well as our Public Works Team and PG&E for working to secure the area. There was considerable damage to some infrastructure, power lines, and the road was closed for a considerable period of time, and everyone worked very diligently to get that secured and opened back up as soon as possible. So thank you to everybody who responded to that, that challenging situation and for trying to address it as best as possible. With that, I'd like to move on, and I would like to introduce our new Assistant City Manager, Charles Ching. If you'd like to come up, Charles. He started a week ago. Glad he's still here. A week later, means he must like it. We're off to a, to a nice start. Briefly, Charles has served in local government for about 17 years, I believe, in Fair 17 years, I believe, in Fairfield, and more recently, in San Pablo. He's a very experienced manager and leader, having worked in community development, economic development, as an Assistant City Manager. I'm really excited to welcome Charles to the team. I know some of you have had a chance to meet him, and everybody will, as he continues to make the rounds, to get out and see everybody. And with that, Charles, if you'd like to offer up a few words.
Yeah, thank you, City Manager. And Madam Mayor, Member City Council, good evening. Truly an honor to be serving as your new Assistant City Manager. Want to thank City Council and the City Manager for providing me with this opportunity. This is truly a highlight of my career. I want to thank all the staff. My first week here in Walnut Creek has been nothing short of amazing. Everyone's been really nice and has really welcomed me with open arms. And so, want to thank city staff, and really looking forward to working with City Council and city staff in really doing great things here in Walnut Creek. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And lastly, I think it's Heather's turn. Come on up so we can talk about you for a little while, Heather. Oh, you got to get on up there. Yeah, we're not letting you off easily here. So... So, as Heather is heading up here, after nearly 40 years of public service and over 17 years with Walnut Creek, this is Heather's final City Council meeting, as she is retiring at the end of the month. In addition to many of our Public Works team, and our executive team, and other city staff that we have here, I do want to acknowledge, we have some special folks in the audience. I believe Heather's sister Corinne is here. Welcome. Her niece and nephew, Victoria and Jake. I think Jake will look familiar to many folks. And great nieces and nephews, Brianna, Austin, and Brooke. And additionally, her friends Kim, Carolyn, and Julie are here. And I'm quite certain her cats, Bear and Shadow, are cheering her on from home. So, welcome, everybody. Thank you for making the time to be here to recognize Heather. So, a few things that you may not know about Heather is that she grew up in the area. She went to Ignacio Valley High, where she was a four-year varsity softball player. Remember that from one of our icebreakers a long time ago, and have always avoided trying to play softball against her, because I would probably lose. So, she is also an avid water skier, and is a member of a water ski club for many years. And then, a few things that probably everybody does know is that Heather has great taste in wine, and if you ever get a gift, it's usually a good bottle of wine. So, you can always rely on Heather's gifts for sure. And she's a die-hard Niners and Giants fan. And if you haven't seen it, she has a Sign Joe Montana poster in her office. You got to check that out here in the next month. You know, Heather's made a really substantive impact on both the organization and the community since joining Walnut Creek in 2007. You know, a few stats here, just to give you the scale of responsibilities. She oversees all of our Public Works team, which currently has 106 teammates that we have there. She has responsibility for most of our city's infrastructure, which includes over 200 miles of roads, 69 buildings. We got to get that 70th, just be a nice round number there. 1,500 street lights, or yeah, 100 traffic lights, 22 parks, 2,700 acres of open space, and 175 vehicles that are in the city's fleet that are maintained on, obviously, a very regular basis. She is also part of the city's disaster response team, and over the years, has helped lead the department's response to many storms and emergencies, which is one of the more challenging aspects of the job, and really, is one of the most important. And we've had a number of storms the last few years that Heather's worked a lot of hours to help make sure we respond appropriately. She's also played pivotal roles in many projects, but more recently, in the renovation of the Lurkey Swim Center in 2017, '18, the Corporation Yard relocation, the Lesher Plaza project that was completed a few years ago, several safe routes to school, Your Park's Your Future, which we'll be working on with the new community center and pool, and the Heather Farms All Abilities Playground. And obviously, there are many more, but those are the ones that are more recent and that we probably see day-to-day. You know, with all that said, really, Heather's larger impact has been upon those with whom she's worked over the years. As we all know, Heather's very warm and engaging. She puts people first, and she's fun to be around. She's great to work with. And in addition to the hundreds of people she's positively impacted over the years, she's been very actively engaged in the profession, and was the American Public Works Association Leader of the Year in 2015. And so, with that, I'd like to thank you, Heather, for your many contributions to Walnut Creek. Thank you.
Is it my turn?
It is indeed.
Well, first off, I don't know who, you know, the coup, who surprised all this. I had no idea that my whole family and friends were going to be here. So, I was nervous already, and then, when they were all here in the lobby, I'm like, "Oh, my God." So, thank you. I just, I'll maybe start by telling a little story. 17 years ago, this job for this Director of Public Works, City of Walnut Creek, came in. And I was like, "I have a great job. I worked at Contra Costa County. I was a deputy director there. But I love Walnut Creek. And it's a well-run city. It has a reputation for being a well-run city. And I thought, if I would go anywhere, I would go to Walnut Creek. By the way, I spend all my money here." So, I was like, "I might as well go to the city that I spend my money at." So, I applied for the job, and then, you know, went through the rigorous process that we go through, Trish, you know. Four interviews later, and then, I got the job. And then, I was like, I won't swear, but I was like, "Holy heck, I've now got the job." And the first day I came to work, and I was driving here to work, and I was calling my friends of the county and saying, "What have I done? I've left a really good job that I loved, and now I'm going somewhere I have no idea what it's going to be like." And actually, as it turns out, I'm here today, it was the best decision I could have ever made. It was really a great decision. It's been a great career. So, you know, I'm really thankful that I made the decision. And with that, I want to thank just so many people, but I'll try to be brief. First off, all of you, City Council, I really appreciate your support. I wouldn't be here if it weren't for your support. You all make the policies, but you trusted the department, me, to implement those policies. And I really do appreciate that. I got cottonmouth here. I got to go get my water. But also, the accolades you give our department, it doesn't go unnoticed. People really do appreciate, when you acknowledged this today, Dan was acknowledging the team and all the efforts we do. So, I really do want to thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Austin. So, thank you. Thank you for your support. And the fellow council members that were before you, too. I worked with a lot of great council members, and I really do appreciate everything you've done for me. Next, I really want to thank Dan, our City Manager. He's been a great mentor for me and a leader. He's led us through a lot of tough times that we've talked about a little bit. He also, though, recognizes that it takes a team, and we have to all work together to get across the finish line. But then, another thing that he does, and it's through his leadership, is recognizes that we're an inclusive, great place to work, and we want to be an employer of choice. And he really walks that talk. And so, I really appreciate that. Appreciate his leadership. My peers, the executive team, I appreciate everything you've done for me. They're all collaborative. They all have a great wealth of knowledge. I really appreciate them being there for me and supportive of me. We have a great team, and we work through all the issues that come across the city plate. And I really do appreciate the executive team. I'm really honored to be the Public Works Director, and I couldn't do it without my team. And so, I really want to recognize, first off, the management team, Rich Payne, Mike Vickers, who's our boardman, and Steve Waymeyer, who's not here, but he was part of that management team. You're in really good hands with them. I'm really excited about their future and what they're going to do for the city and how they're going to grow. And I'm going to be watching council meetings and watching them do all the... Well, maybe. So... And then, the whole Public Works team. I am so proud, and I say this all the time, but I'm really proud of all the work that they do, and a lot of them are here. So, give yourselves a round of applause. They really, it makes it great to work for a city like this, and make changes to the community, and make it a better place. And it's a lot through them. It couldn't be through me. It's through all of them. So, and then, my friends and family, who I didn't know were going to be here today. I'm just, I'm so thrilled that they're here. And I just appreciate, you know, one, I missed, you know, of course, night meetings and things like that. I was, you know, doing work. But also, they provided me great advice. They were always there for me when I was going through tough times, and talking to all of them for consult and advice. And so, I couldn't have done it without, oh, let's see, I'm sorry, all my family and friends. So, my heart is full. I'm very, very thankful. I'm very appreciative. I really appreciate tonight. So, thank you all.
Oh, well, wait a minute. Can we, can we, can we, can we find out if the council has anything to add? And I got a high sign from Councilmember Francois, so we're going to start with him.
Heather, I would just like to, from the bottom of my heart, say thank you. You know, there are a lot of things that come to my mind. I mean, every time I see you at an event, I just get happy. Because I'm, and when Dan said your warm and engaging style, that's who you are. But you're also a consummate professional, kind of one of the best that I've ever seen or encountered in public service. And I do this on, this is my night job, but in my day job, too. And I can see that everyone that you interact with, in your department, in the city, and in the public, you have their respect. And that, it's obvious. And so, thank you for dedicating 17 years of your life to our city. And thank you for how responsive you always were. I remember the storms on New Year's Day two years ago. I'm texting you. 15 minutes later, there's a Public Works truck out there cleaning a drain. And that's just the tip of the iceberg, you know. Every farmer's market, I think I came back with like five or six emails that you always responded to. So, thank you for all you did for our city and for being there. And I will truly miss you.
Kevin?
Heather, I think I've known you somewhat, even when I was on the Transportation Commission, there was some working there. But obviously, when I got on City Council eight years ago, and I think you were the first person that reached out to me after I was suddenly on council and said, "We're going to do a drive-through with all the parks now, and we got a chance to get to know each other." You always smile. It is amazing. Whenever I see you, whether it's a council meeting or anywhere else outside, warm and engaging is absolutely the perfect description. You're always smiling. You put me in a better mood. And we went on that ride-along just through all the different parks, and I got to learn a little bit more about what you do professionally here. It's amazing. You lead the largest of all of our departments, the people that people see all the time, whether they're happy that things are being fixed, or whether they're cursing the Ignacio Valley Road as a lane closed. But this is all part of your team. And so, personally speaking, you're so engaging. But professionally speaking, you make my job easier. You do. Because when I am hit with complaints, whether it's on social media, or next door, or just farmer's market, or in the street, and they might be complaining about one thing or another, or something's broken, or, it's often in your umbrella. And I'll reach out to you. You're immediately responsive. Somebody is getting back to me and the resident. And you even said, "Give them my email." And that is so helpful to hear. I look like I'm doing my job, because you're doing your job. And thank you. If that weren't for that, I don't think any of us would be running for City Council. So, thank you so much for all the time and effort, and doing it with a smile.
We were certainly lucky 17 years ago, when we stole you from the county. Sorry about that, Julie. And it is nice that so many of your family and your friends from the county. And Corinne, it is wonderful to see you. I am so happy to see you. And I will tell you that Tom is, my husband, Tom, is going to be very disappointed, because he's not going to have you and your sister Corinne to dance with at the On Broadway, you know, because I wouldn't dance with him, because he doesn't know how to count. So, I think about the last 17 years, and all of the wonderful things that have been accomplished under your leadership. But it's a testament to your leadership, but also the work of the entire Public Works crew and staff. When we think about sustainability, we can't achieve our goals if we are not doing it through the Public Works Division, whether it's reducing the landscaping, irrigation demands and water demands of our landscaping, or all-electric or alternative fuel fleets, EV charging stations, solar, and the roofing on the Shadlands, Peniman House, and other places made of all that sustainable material is amazing. It's because of your leadership, even if you're not making all the final decisions, that your team is able to accomplish those things. I think about the improvements to our open space and the trails. And, you know, 34 alternatives, or 17, or whatever the right number is, but things to improve the use of our open space trails, which is so important since COVID, and how actively we are using our open spaces. We have 23 new acres of open space up on Ocalana's Ridge during your tenure. We have our first solar panels during your tenure. You handle neighborhood issues impeccably, as does your team. And you can trust in them to do that, because you have selected those people to help you. But the biggest project that no one has mentioned yet was early on in your career, and that's the Walnut Creek Downtown Library. It came online under your tenure. So, thank you. That is a well-used facility. And we are certainly appreciative of your work. We will, you will be greatly missed. But the nice thing is, what you all do, all of you in Public Works, is you do things that we can kick and pat and touch and feel really good, because we get to look at them. So, thank you so much.
Okay, I'm the newbie on the block. So, like Kevin, when I first got on council, I've known Heather for a long time, because of the Planning Commission. She's like, "Let's go get in the car, and I'll show you things." And she's driving me around town. And she's like, "Oh, and then this roof, and then this roof, and then this." And "Did you know we own a house up here on this hill right here?" "Yeah, we own that." But then, there's this bridge. "We have to do something about that bridge." And then, blah, 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 blah. And just amazing knowledge of every little piece of the city, and the ethos that all of you have, especially about downtown, that it should be like Disneyland. It should be clean. It should be happy. Tinkerbell is coming over. And I so appreciate that in all of the work that Public Works does. And you do it with grace. You do it with style. And we just really appreciate it. Going through the selection of the Architect Panel on the pool, Heather gets up there, and she's like, all these crazy people in the room, and they've all interviewed everybody. And she's like, "Okay, now, let's all get together." And she gets it, walks everybody through it, like, "Oh, yeah. Yeah, she's right. Let's pick that one." But the best thing that Heather's ever done is when my husband was working for the Forest Service, and he was sick and tired of being by himself, because there's no women up there, apparently, is Heather gave him a job with the county years ago. And so, thank you, Heather, because you brought him down out of the hill. So, I, thank you. And by the way, retirement is a lot of fun.
Until you run for council. It's really hard. It's great to have these guys as the people who ask the questions before they get to me. It's just darn hard to figure out what you're going to say after they've covered, "Oh, your life," and probably every vacation you've ever been on, and some other things. So, I'm just going to say, I really have enjoyed developing a friendship with you. When I first met you, I don't think I got the ride around town. But it turns out that when I first met you, all I could think of is, "This person works with those guys with those big trucks, and they like her." And I thought, "Oh, my gosh, she's figured out how to talk to men on a level that not many women get to do." And I think the other thing that I can be assured of is, you have probably kept the staff of the Public Works Department long after they would have gone to other places, because you built a place where they felt very good and respected. And they stayed, because you were a great boss. And I think, in many ways... because you were a great boss, and I think in many ways, that's the biggest compliment I can think to give you. I'll miss you.
I miss you.
And, and we're going to have to get together. Thank you for all you did.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Everybody.
Now, business. Yes.
Alrighty. I think we have one public service person. Okay. All right, now on to regular business, which would be the consent calendar. There is a correction on one of the items. Does anybody want to pull it on the council?
Yes, I do, I'd like to pull item F, please.
And I'd like to pull item I.
Item I, okay. Is there any public comment on the, I'm down to one piece of public again. Okay, well, I see no need to do that, so let's have a motion, please.
Move to approve item consent calendar, oh, shoot, I hit the wrong button, consent calendar items A through.
E.
E, and then G and H.
I will second the motion as long as it is, item B is as amended.
Yeah.
And I'll be abstaining from items 2A and 2D as I was, missed that meeting, the July 23rd meeting.
And I stand corrected, it was item A, the minutes.
Okay, we did that like we were rehearsing. Good job. And now, may I have a roll call vote?
Mayor Protem Darling.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Francois.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilk.
Aye.
Mayor Haskew.
Aye.
Motion carries, noting the abstention from Councilmember Francois.
On one item. Next item on the agenda is public community.
No, no, we, we.
Oh, we have F and I, sorry. We'll do it in alphabetical order.
Thank you, Mayor. I, we are, I would like to pull the item regarding the services agreement with Mintier Harnish to provide a comprehensive update of our sign ordinance, I have a couple of questions of staff.
Ask away. She's coming.
Hello, Erica Vanen-Brown, Community Development Director.
Thank you so much, I'm very excited about this because we started this project before the pandemic, and then due to a number of constraints during the pandemic, we had to set it to the side, and it's very important. Can you, one of the concerns that we hear frequently in the community is that our sign ordinance has, can be inconsistent at times, and different sets of rules in different places. Are we going to approach, is that one of the issues we're trying to approach, and can we confidently say that we might have a sign ordinance and design guidelines that are consistent for different land use categories, like office buildings or neighborhood shopping centers?
So, as you had noted earlier, before COVID had come, the intention was to update and modernize the sign ordinance. Since then, we've gotten additional feedback, and so we added, we proposed additional items in the scope to be able to get additional feedback from our stakeholders, to be able to address exactly those types of issues, and to be able to identify them and get to root cause, and have a more modern sign ordinance than one which was originally conceived over 30 years ago.
My last question is, in the scope of the work, it's very detailed, and what it outlines is a process where the consultants will work with the Design Review Commission and the Planning Commission, and then give us the results of what their input is. Is there any way, sometimes that ends up being that we're getting, because we're last, if we have a policy difference of opinion with the input of the commissions, we get into a conundrum. Is there any way where our input can be a part of the early on stage with the Design Review Commission and Planning Commission, or ahead of them?
So, absolutely, and whenever we talk this through, we really think it's important because council is the policy body to help us frame up some of these items, and then as we go through the process, to be able to have the stakeholder input, and then have Planning Commission and then Design Review Commission to serve as that, you know, those that are looking from an implementation standpoint. But I've talked to staff about it, you know, in terms of council input, it's like bigger than a breadbox and smaller than an elephant, and trying to get those policy parameters in place so that there's some guardrails in the discussions.
Great, I appreciate that, and thank you, Mayor. I'm happy to make the motion to approve item F.
Second.
Second.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilk.
Aye.
Councilmember Francois.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Darling.
Aye.
Mayor Haskew.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Alrighty, then, I.
Aye. So, I just really wanted to pull this item to recognize our outgoing commissioners on the Design Review Commission, Brian Killian and Carlos Velia, and recognize them for their work and appreciation for them being commissioners. There's a lot of work that is involved in that, and I thank them for their time, and I also look to welcoming our new commissioners, Cricket, and Karen Basings, thank you very much, I had that down, I couldn't see it. It just goes to show that it doesn't mean if you don't get appointed immediately that you don't end up serving at some point, so it's always great to still be involved, and I look forward to seeing them on the DRC in the weeks and months to come. And with that, I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
I'd like a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wilk.
Aye.
Councilmember Francois.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Darling.
Aye.
Mayor Haskew.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Now, we're at official public communications item, and I am looking for anybody who would like to make a communication. And I see heads shaking no, so I will close that item, and we will go on to a closed session. So, we will, we will close this session, and we'll be back when we're finished.